United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
I'll take that. Is there any questions?
Okay, I call this May 6th morning, Commissioner's meeting in order. We have the auditor, all three commissioners, and the county attorney present. First on our agenda, we'll have an EMS update from Mr. Anderson.
Yes, as you well know, we're negotiating with Part View. Part View will have the rough draft, I hope, today, and then we'll look it over. And if it's okay with the attorney, I'd like to say we have it. But, Dale, within the next week, we should have it signed, hopefully. Everything looks like it's going good. I know we had a conference call with Barry the other day to ask him some questions. So that all looks good. There has been, I hear all kinds of rumors flowing around, but just so we're all on the same page, we are not, and Lutheran has not, officially contacted us about doing anything else. I hear that, you know, some of the bosses are going around saying that we won't negotiate with them, we're gonna talk to them. They pulled, and these guys are here as my witnesses, they pulled their bid on a letter. They didn't even come in and talk to us and ask us if we could do anything else. They sent a letter to the auditor's office and to Barry Ritter, is how that got done. We have not contacted, been contacted by any of the upper management of Lutheran since. So, just so we get that straight out of your rumors, that why ain't we negotiating with Lutheran still? Well, they pulled the contract, or the, yeah, they pulled their bid and never heard from them since, so, just to put that to ease, so, that's all I got on that front.
Okay. All right. We have the Fedco contract amendment. We are, the contract is $130,000, and we are pulling out the $15,697 for the Northern Indiana, Northern Central Indiana Regional Planning Group, which we were associated with because they would like the county to pay that, that fee, all the other counties, all the other six counties, five counties, pay that. So we're just cleaning up some, some bookkeeping stuff, I guess, for that organization. So, you guys have looked at it? Do you have any questions? Michael, A, good, so, okay. So, I guess, an entertaining motion to approve the amended contract for Fedco.
So, move.
Second. Law paper. Motion carries three out. Let's go for the counsel also. Okay. Then we have the contract for North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council. It's a yearly contract, amount is $15,697. You guys had a chance to look at it?
Yep, same thing we had before, we're just paying it different.
Yep, yep, same services, everything is the same.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Law paper. Motion carries three out. Okay, I had a request from Lindsay Barks. She's got the group, there's a yogi, she called them yogis, they're doing some health and awareness stuff throughout the summer with the city, using some different grounds, and she wanted to know if they could use the old jail lot over here randomly through the summer on Saturdays, and the vast back porch between the city parks and the ass, so...
Yep, lovely, yep. Weight conflict and nothing else, I'm good, yeah, let them use it.
Okay. Good.
Who are you bringing a person to?
It's Lindsay Barks.
About her work ethic.
Well, it's, she's a...
What's the name of the guy who's a lady bud?
Roots yoga.
What is that?
Roots yoga.
Yoga, okay.
Yeah, somebody has it. All right. Nice reading. Okay, let me have...
He goes there.
No.
Maybe he's an old member.
We have a Woodland Hospital Board reappointment. The board has sent us a letter asking for, I'm reporting that Greg Millinger, his term will be up on June 5th, so, questions on that? And then a motion to reappoint Greg Millinger?
He's done a good job, I think, for K. So, I'll make that motion.
Second. Law paper. Motion carries three out. Okay. You guys have seen the travel request?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns on those?
I haven't seen any. You see any, Dale?
Nope. Okay, then entertaining motion to approve those. To move.
Second.
Law paper. Motion carries three out. We'll sign those afterwards. Okay, department updates. John, Guyer Highway Department.
Sorry, we'll start with bid, Dale.
Yep.
Come back and finish.
Sure.
We've got bid open for community causing projects. We've got three open here. So, Brooks Construction on number one, 400 north, from State Road 17 to 725 east, County Road 1200 west. They have $365,127.50.
127, what was a cent?
Three, yeah, 50. Number two, 900 west, Old State Road 17, from 600 west, Olson Road to State Road 110. Number three, 600 north, from County Line to State Road 17. Number four, 75 north, from 700 north, County Line, County Road 1200 west to 1100 west. Main Street, number five. Main Street from 75 north to County Line. Get all those?
Yep, I think so.
Number one, 400 north, from State Road 17 to 725 east, or County Road 1200 west. Number two, 900 west, Old State Road 17, from 600 west, Olson Road to State Road 110. Number three, 600 north, from County Line to State Road 17. Number four, west, 75 north, from 700 north, County Line, or County Road 1200 west to 1100 west. Number five, Main Street from 75 north to County Line. Number one, 400 north, from State Road 17 to 725 east, County Road 1200 west. Number two, 900 west, Old State Road 17, from 600 west, Olson Road to State Road 110. Number three, 600 north, from County Line to State Road 17. Number four, 75 north, from 700 north, County Line, or County Road 1200 west to 1100 west. Number five, Main Street from 75 north to County Line. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, thank you. Did you have, did you review those?
Katie and I will deal them in, and we can bring them back and keep it a work one, as I do.
Yep. Okay. Kathy, did you have anything?
Not really, other than friendly reminder, taxes are due Friday.
Just what everybody wanted to hear, Kathy.
I know, unfortunately.
Thanks for the good news, huh?
Yep.
All right. I don't have a whole lot. There'd be a couple ordinances, I believe it's on the docket for you guys to review. One is the jail detention money, the 70-15-15 split. All that was for was just, basically just clearing up exactly what operational costs are and what maintenance costs are.
They don't have that.
Oh, okay. I thought that needed to be reviewed by commissioners too.
It does, it's gotta be signed by the commissioner, because it's a joint hit. Everybody's gotta honestly agree on it. Council signed it at the last...
Yeah, they signed it at the last meeting. All right, I'll bring that up at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, just get it to us so we can review it.
Okay, yeah. And that's basically all it's doing, is just clearing up exactly defining what the operational funds were and what the...
Three different accounts for the...
Yeah, what the maintenance, you gotta just make a definition on that. Another one would be the alarms, alarm ordinance. Yeah, no? Christina?
They don't have any of the ordinances.
Okay, all right, well, we'll talk about that next meeting then.
Okay.
So, 74 inmates this morning, 24 of them were out of county, seven federal, four DOCs holds. I do have another ordinance for Grant County, holding Grant County inmates. Basically, it's the same ordinance that you've signed for every other county, it just says Grant County.
Can I have Holly take a quick look at it, please?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the same format, it just says Grant County on there, Grant County Sheriff. They reached out a couple weeks ago and asked if we could hold some of their inmates due to overcrowding issues. Wabash County did take their inmates back, they opened up their new facilities, so, so that's that, I think. Corrections Week is this week, I sent everybody everything for that. We've got breakfast Wednesday, if you'd like to come out and attend. And then next week is Law Enforcement Week, we'll have a lunch next Thursday for that, so, we'll do some fun things in between all of that, so...
Breakfast Wednesday, what time was it, eight o'clock?
7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m.
Yeah, 7:00 a.m. But, other than that, I think that's all I have.
Okay, we'll sign that as soon as she says, if she says it's okay here in a minute.
All right.
Any questions for me? Thank you, Kerry.
I wanted to give some updates. First of all, the boiler, they started changing out the boiler at the courthouse this morning. That project will take probably 14, 15 days, so that's started. I did get some quotes on the replacement of the chiller at the courthouse. I am waiting on one more, and then I'll get with you guys about that, and I talked to you guys a little bit about that before. That's the primary chiller, I'm gonna use the backup chiller for the summer, and use the number one chiller just as a backup, because there's three compressors out of it right now. Hopefully, it'll make it through, and it takes like 48 weeks to order a new chiller, so even if I were going now, it would be too late. So, as soon as I get the quotes, I'll get with you and see if we can, maybe towards the end of the fall, we can do something to order one in through, to have it here next I wanted to let you know about the annex chiller up here on the roof. I did an inspection with Core a couple days ago, and we do have a couple compressors going out on that chiller. They're gonna give me a price on it while trying to get it fixed and see if we can save it, instead of trying to replace it. So I'll get back with you on that also, and I wanted to be aware of it. The new lights, the two-by-two LED lights are in, and those guys are gonna start replacing the lights at the end of the week. And I'm gonna start over at the courthouse, because I have a couple offices over there that are pretty much needing it now. And then it'll be slowly throughout the year thing, that we'll replace and get all LED by the end of the year. On the annex building, we've had a leak, I guess it was before my time, but it's been down there in the surveyor's office, along that wall, that whole stretch right here. It's like 30 feet long. I have a company, they're gonna send me a quote today on how much it's gonna be to dig down and get that sealed, so that we can get that fixed.
So they'll have to dig down, seal it from the outside?
Yes, and we'll have to rip out some of the shrubs on that side to do it, so, but I'm gonna get a quote today, and they're supposed to have it two days.
Put a tile down there, then two, to take water away and keep pressure?
They said that they would look at that as we get down in there to see how bad or what it might be, but it's a lifetime guarantee seal, too.
Yeah, that's good.
And then last but not least, TP Mechanics has been taking care of our service on the courthouse annex and the probation building for the last year, on servicing our HVAC units and chillers and boilers and all that, and changing our filters out. That expires as of June 1st, our contract with them. I put a couple of bids out, or had a couple companies put some bids in, I should say, and the total bid for Core is $15,219. OJS put a bid in at $17,661, so with your blessing, I know Chad's up next, and we've talked together about Core, and he's gonna give you his info, but I would like to go with Core. They're cheaper, and they've been doing a ton of the work here, and I trust them, and I'd like to stick with them.
I'm good.
And I'll get you the contract, and have you guys to sign it.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Do you want to go ahead and vote on that, so we can sign it, whenever we get there?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
What was, what was the dollar run again?
$15,219 for Core.
Okay. An entertaining motion then to approve the Core contract, $15,219 for the service contract.
So moved.
Second. Law paper. Motion carries three out.
All right, thank you. I'll get you the contract first.
Thank you, Kerry. Thank you.
Chad, maintenance jail.
Really, the only thing I have is the EM contracts, like you were saying, and my bid from Core was $14,306, and from OJS it was $14,250, so Core was, what, $57 more? But I don't see a reason to have two different companies when we're familiar with them.
You like the way they do the work, you're, you're good with them.
Yeah, and I, I had sent an email to TP Mechanics, and they're done with us out there at June 1st also, so...
Okay. All right, then. An entertaining motion then to approve the Core contract with jail, took $14,306. To move.
Second.
Law paper. Motion carries three out. Eric, does go good out there?
Yeah, yeah, they have been fertilizing and spraying the grass, and it looks a million times better. I don't know if you guys have been by it or not.
Good.
It's looking nice. They got it all, the mulch all refreshed, so...
Good.
Good. Thank you, Chad.
Yep. Okay, Dale, EMB, Highway 1.
All right, a couple things. You have your Highway 1 notebooks in front of you there, they're pretty standard. My pool of Highway 1 and the admin was 3,000 per and seven calls last month, and then we had a pool of 26 text messages on Highway 1. Any questions on those? Krista and I went to the Director's Summit a week ago. They had really good speakers. Obviously, we only stayed for the one day and Marshall the next, but it was great training. Our new employee is doing excellent. She's already on the radio, which, she's moving along very quickly, so we're pleased about that.
Who was the name on that deal?
Uh, Brandy. She's the one that we hired in as part-time when we moved her full-time.
Oh, okay, all right.
The, we went to the job fair last week, Dawn and I did, and that was refreshing. We gave about 30 applications away for EMA volunteers to children, which was, or kids, young adults, I should say, but they were very broasted in what they were doing, and I will say this, their trade program, a couple of them came up to us and they were really excited that they could drive really big equipment and stuff, so I knew they were back behind the jail, but they were telling us all about that, and some of the kids that were getting ready to do that, so it was quite the good time there. We went to the EMA District 2 meeting, where we collaborated and talked about grants and some of the mitigations and hazards that are here in Fulton County, so we're all working together as agencies, would be START, Oakheart, St. Joe, Marshall, Casillasco, and Fulton County, and Flaska County, but we work together for mutual aid in what hazards are here, and we make sure those are established within the system for Webby OC and future grants and so forth. So, we did meet also with Red Cross last week, in partnership with them, how to make our community better, and with our EMA volunteers, they're engaging in that program, and we'll be a part of that program. EMPG grant, the salary grant that I apply for every year, it was paid for today, it always is a year behind, so I applied for $11,000 last year, and $9,000 for the deputies, so we should have had $20,000, but until I see that receipt in, I'm not, don't quote me on that.
So they do pay part of the deputy?
They do, currently at this time.
Okay, I can remember if they did or not.
We did receive an email that they are cutting funding, and that may not be available. I will tell you that, but we'll continue to fill out those grants accordingly that is needed, so... And then, this Thursday, we'll be doing the Rochester School Safety Walk Through at 10:00 a.m. We do that every year, so they can help them with their grant, and for us to become better familiar on the grounds of the schools. So, other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
I don't have any, I think so.
I don't?
All right.
Thank you.
Good morning.
How's it going?
Going along just fine, thanks. Just wanted to give you a few updates, like on our data and statistics for this year. Total of, and this is effective May 1st, we had 46 people that have passed away in the county, and of that, there's 26 men, or 26 women and 20 men. But of that, our coroner's calls, we've served about 16, and of that, 6 females and 10 males, just to let you know. So that's approximately 33% of the people that pass away here in the county that were investigating their deaths or trying to help the family. Our procedure so far this year, we've had six autopsies, one toxicology that we performed, and we've had 10 natural deaths, and then three people have taken their lives. We're still awaiting three autopsy results, and just wanted to let you know that. Next month, we have our big seminar, our educational seminar in Indianapolis, we're looking forward to that. We do have the second biggest in the United States, and it'll be bigger and better than ever this year, I can tell you. So, we're looking forward, we're all fired up to go to that, and learn more, and be able to help our community. So, that's about all I have today, it's more brief.
Well, thank you for...
Okay. Thank you, yes. Have a great week and be safe.
You too. Josh, IT.
Good morning, all of you.
Good morning.
Few updates, don't have much. Auditor's office is starting the electronics claim process. Devin and I have reached out to various departments, and I know Chantal has worked with the departments as far as giving them an update. We still have a few departments that need scanners. Last week, with the claim period, Devin and I submitted claims electronically, went smooth, really not much to worry about. Departments can use their Ricoh scanners, or linear scanners that they have in their departments, the copiers, or they can go with the desktop. The desktop is easier. One of the problems with the copiers is it automatically names a file, so they have to go in and rename every single file, make sure they don't get mixed up. As far as phones are concerned, a phone company got all this last week, we got the first batch of phones in. I don't know if some, some department heads have noticed, others have not. The phones are outdated, they don't automatically update at the end of the night like they should. That's due to the fact that they're no longer supported through RTC. So the phones will be rolling out, we're gonna start with the detention center this week, we're gonna pick them up this morning or this afternoon, and start installing those and swapping the old out. A lot of phones, they've served their purpose, unfortunately, they're just coming to an end of their life, so those are gonna be replaced.
What happened to the old ones?
The old ones, basically, scrap. There's really not much we can do with them, unfortunately. There's really not much we can do with them, unfortunately, like I said, they don't update. We can hold on to them and see if there's anybody that's willing to sit there and purchase them. We can go that route and see. Probably won't get much for them, but it's something. We could try that route first. I just know we're gonna have a lot of phones and a lot of phones, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
Website, Dave and I and Devon sat last week, went over the website. Devon and I are gonna send an email out to all the department heads and let them know that they need to scan over their pages, their department pages, find out what still works, what doesn't work. Devon and I will sit down with them and kind of go over what changes they want made. If possible, we prefer them sit there and reach out via email, just take screenshots of their pages, mark down what they want changed, what they left to tack, and go about it that way. Like to get that stuff done before June, get that taken care of. So that's moving right along. Kerry and Devon were able to get the camera replaced outside the courthouse, so that's been fixed. Kerry was able to get a lift, which we appreciate. And Kerry and Devon, which I appreciate, were able to sit there and go up on the lift and get it taken care of.
Don't like height, huh?
I'm not a big fan. And then we've got some server work and changes that need to be made with certain applications, Pro QA over at Dispatch is one of them. We're on that this week also. And then I will be in here tomorrow for elections, so that is about it, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay.
I think so.
I like the looks on your website. It's looking good.
I do too. It's coming along. It's been a pretty easy process so far.
Good, because we need one desperately.
Yeah, yep, yep. And I know, you know, just to kind of elaborate a little bit more on it, Dave and I and Devon have really spent a lot of time going over what has worked and where the traffic lies on our current website. So we want to build upon that and then, of course, try to direct a little bit more traffic out of the areas also.
Sure.
In the past, with the original website, it was pretty much standard that certain departments really didn't have anything they wanted to put up. But we'd really like to encourage the departments to at least put some information up. So it doesn't look the best when we have blank pages out there with certain departments because they have some information.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Josh.
Thank you.
Got Michael Vidko.
Oh, he's got a sheet paper.
There's a few things going on. I submitted the stellar application, it was due at noon on the 1st of May. Like I've told you before, you only get two awards out of the entire state, so I'm not helping out for a whole lot, you know, at that point. But Ready Two, we're about halfway through the cuts. We have to cut about forty million dollars. We'll be meeting Friday evening to finish the cuts. The industrial part, we've already lost a million five, but we'll be okay on that. Jana at the school, she's surviving so far, which I anticipate she will go ahead and survive it. Childcare is like number one in the state right now. And then, just to show you how acute everything has become, she had a meeting with some school people and some local businesses, industries to talk about filling the classes. She's asking for five classes to be set up. She has a waiting list now that would occupy twelve rooms.
Wow.
Yeah. It's getting worse and worse out there, apparently. So I suspect if there's a Ready Three or whatever's wound up being called, that'll be another project, which is what we want. That's the type of projects we need, something that's going on already, that's ongoing situation, so we can throw it in the pot at that point. Charlie and I have written two Duke Energy Grants and we were awarded both of them. One is for five thousand dollars to be added to the website. They'll help us, that's gonna be helpful at that point. The other was for ten thousand dollars, which doesn't sound much, but actually what it brings to the table is a lot of due diligence that will help us cut down costs on studies that have to be done on that ground and whatnot. We're waiting for the checks to come in, of course, but we've already met with the engineering firm who's gonna help us with all of this. And I can't put a figure to what this extra cost is, or gift is gonna be, but I suspect it'd be in the five-figure range at some point, so. I'll keep you up to date on that one. Let's see, what else? Actually, oh, the housing study. We are at the point now where we're actually gonna select a developer, find a site and start the process. I have six developers' information set on my desk. And every day, we have another phone call. One of the things that has happened to the good is that the state has taken off certain restrictions for rural counties. And this is why we're getting a lot of interest in Fulton County right now. The bad part of it is, they have to get their applications set up and going by the end of July, because that's when the deadline and the restrictions go back on. So you'll see a lot of work going on at this point. I'll keep you guys updated on all that, so. That's where we're at.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Amy, do you have it?
Transportation study is now complete. I have to pick up the final paper copies at the chamber on my ready to work. We had a great conversation and a proposal that was circled back from Beadham that I believe Rick is gonna come to Warsaw with me to review. So they have.
They have no date on that yet, though, right?
What was that? No date on that, yeah, post-election. So they reviewed the information that was sent in from the committee and reviewed some information regarding local advocacy and are looking at a part-time position that will be here anchored in Fulton County for the EMA. So I've gotta research that and see what they're really proposing and if that makes sense and a few other details. So that's pretty exciting to have that come back from all the hard work and conversations. And then had a great meeting with the individuals at, in Project Independence, combined community services. Brian Johnson participated in that, up at Beadham. Just looking at some opportunities to try to help move our folks who suffer substance use and mental health issues, try to get them some support. So we've got a lot of good things going on. Hard work, but in a lot of long process, but it seems like it's moving in the right direction. We're excited, so. Survey results for the transportation study should be to us in the summer to see what that tells us. So I'll present that once I receive it.
Good. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing that is really neat that I told the guys, I forgot about this, but we've received attention from other counties looking for ways to do what we do with collaborating together with the service providers. So we will have some elected officials actually from Caziasco County who will be coming here to collaborate to review Fulton County Hope, to see if they can potentially do something similarly there. So we've got, we kind of need to, you know, reverse the process there and tell them a little bit about how cool we are, so.
Good.
Yeah, so we're excited. That's a good thing.
Thank you. It's Lisa, right?
Yes.
Transcorp? Okay, do you have something for Doug, one of us to sign?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this is. Yeah, okay. Quarterly budget. Okay. We can, we'll just sign this after, I guess, to make sure it's.
Okay. What is it?
Quarterly budget. You said quarterly or year?
I think it's quarterly, I think. It didn't work.
Okay. Okay. John, you're.
Yep.
Well, even though Polly, we have the, it's inter-local agreement you're good with, right? Grant County?
Yes, yes.
Okay. This is basically more of a plate, putting Grant County here. An EMA motion to approve that interlocal agreement for helping get mates in our debt.
So moved.
Second. All fair. Motion carries three out. Alright. Good job, thanks.
So Holly's going over the contract. I'll go over, I got permits. The first one I have is permit request 2417 from Mark Thompson of Nipco. And he's requesting a two-by-three road cut to install fifty-seven feet of new gas line along Lake Shore Drive, another way, starting at three hundred seventy feet south of northwest Lake Shore Drive. John Flynn, John Flynn took care of this one, checked it out.
Needs certain damage you guys need.
Yeah. Hate to see him cutting the road, but wasn't much choice.
Okay. I have a permit 24 to 17, an EMA motion to approve.
So moved.
Sorry.
Next one is permit request 2418, Danielle Bell of Nipco. She's requesting to dig in the right of way to remediate a minor gas leak and perform general maintenance at 27 North Old US 31.
Yeah, yours is good.
We didn't have much choice on that one. They'd already dug a hole and we caught them.
Oh.
So, but what they're doing, we're okay with it. They're in the right of way and they're trying to repair a leaky line, so not much reason to stop them.
Yeah. Okay. For the gas community?
No. I'm making motion to approve.
Second. All fair. Motion carries three out.
Next one I have is permit request 2419, OCM Engineering in Miami CAS RMC. They're requesting permit to install and therefore after main tank by boring a new fiber optic line cable in the right of way, starting at 1,000 South and Meridian Road and traveling west three thousand, thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety, or eight hundred and thirty-nine feet. And my question to you on this one, and they asked, is if you want waiver the fee like you did with our D.C. when they installed fiber. This is for their new broadband. Yeah. In that account.
Oh.
But this is gonna come across our county line.
Yeah. Who's it for?
It's OCM Engineering in Miami CAS RMC.
Okay.
But is it fifty bucks? Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're not really out anything. Can't really provide the service to, you know, they do. There's a lot of people along that stretch in our county that'll be getting good out of that. So I'll make a motion to waive the fee for that permit.
Second. And approve the permit.
And approve the permit.
Okay. All fair. Motion carries three out.
The next one I have here, I sent it to you Friday, it came in late, the next two did, is Next Modular. And they are requesting permit. I thought I knew what this one was. Oh, this is the driveway, correct, John?
On the south side of the road.
Yeah. And then one put this in. It doesn't have the right address, though. Is it at, okay, approximately 178 West, 100 South, Rochester. Yeah. Basically, what this one is, John took care of this one too. There's existing driveway there, it's concrete, they're gonna have to expand, widen it a little bit. So they just want permission at that address to widen their driveway. They want to get the permit, make sure that thing was kosher.
Okay.
Sorry, I kind of forgot. Slept a couple of days since I ran out.
Yeah.
That's basically it, right, John?
Yes, for our part of it anyway, they're gonna build a new house, they're proposed to, and there is an old, it's asphalt, whatever, driveway that goes back halfway, quarter mile and back this field. They want to develop it and use that driveway.
Okay. An entertaining motion for permit 2420.
Second.
All fair. Motion carries three out.
And the last one I have is permit request 2421. And this comes from Dennis Burton. And he's wanting to make a road cut to install a tile, and it's a six-inch tile on 200 North, about 1,200 feet west of 400 plus. And the reason he's asking for a road cut instead of a bore is because about two years ago, he came in, got a permit to do a bore, and it's failed because it's a mucky area. And the muck has shifted and changed under the road or something in there, and his tile isn't working again. So he don't think the bore worked? It didn't work the last time. And you're okay with it? I hate to, but again. What road'd you say it was? 200 North. And it's down there where we really need to pave anyway. But he's already tried a bore and it failed. He's requesting to cut it this time, that way he can dig down and prepare the tile so it'll shift.
Okay. An entertaining motion to approve permit 2421. So moved.
Second.
All fair.
Going over work activities with the guys that have been passing holes, running brush cutter, changing culverts, working on getting these community crossing roads ready and sodding roads. It's Sardisodden, they got Old 31 South sodded and north up to Bridge, which is, we're gonna chip this year. I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a little bit. Federal aid, I haven't heard anything, but as far as I know, Old 31 South still will go to pave this month later. We've got all of our work done on it. They're, they start talking to them, it's probably later this month. Old 31 North, we got an RFP out. That was a federal aid project that was granted to us earlier this year. And we've got an RFP out to hire consultant for the engineering on that, and those are due in on May 17. State Route 114 between 35 and State Route 17. I was talking to Phil, he has that project, Phil was here earlier, and they're planning on starting that road closure tomorrow. It'd be somewhere between 17 and Winmac, but he didn't know exactly where they've started. Probably better detour someplace for that. And then Endo's gonna be closing 1175 in about two to three weeks down here at Met Creek. We've got a detour set up around that one too. They're finishing the bridge in Fulton. They've got to hit one lane at a time right now. When they're done with that, they're moving up to Met Creek, but that'll be a hard closure. There won't be one bit of traffic on it.
You say that's next week?
They haven't given me a definite time, but it's the same company doing both bridges and they're gonna finish that one first and they're over half done. So it took them four weeks to get that far. They're telling me two to three weeks they'll be moving up. Which is way ahead of their original schedule, July 4th. Did want to talk to you about Bridge 161. And Katie can maybe help on this a little bit, but there's, we've had to change the bridge design on it a little bit because of the Nipco gas line that runs on the east side of that. So we've had to basically shrink the bridge, I think, two foot. In doing that, that changes the federal standards for speed limit through there. We'd have to make it a forty-five mile an hour speed zone. General public's not gonna notice any difference because it's still from a twenty-four-foot bridge, I believe it's down to a twenty-two-foot. foot bridge, I believe it's down to a twenty-two foot bridge.
Will that cause your problem, the farm equipment getting through there?
It shouldn't. Right now, we've got a sixteen foot bridge. It should, it should help it quite a bit.
Okay.
I don't think the general public's ever going to really notice the change, other than we have to make it a forty-five to meet federal guidelines for that. They go over fifty-five now, but, you know, sixteen foot bridge, one lane, but in order to comply with federal guidelines, we need to do that. So we created, I talked to Travis, we did a traffic study on it and created a coordinates. Willing to do that, to reduce it, and then that'll, that'll give us every, that'll check all of our boxes on that bridge so we can continue forward.
Okay.
I don't believe no. No, it wasn't.
No, it's on schedule to let in December.
Okay.
But the speed limit hasn't been advertised, is what he's asking. I didn't, I didn't think about that, so I need to hold it off till next week.
I wouldn't get in for that.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was still, we'll be all right on that, won't we?
Yeah, we coordinated with, so there's a high-pressure gas main and it is deep enough that it couldn't be located until, it took a couple of tries to locate it. We obviously want to avoid having to relocate that high-pressure gas main. It comes with a big expense. So NIPSCO is in agreeance that if we redesign slightly, which will not cost you guys anything, we're going to redesign it on our own, that they're agreeable to, we'll miss their gas main if we, if we find. So we coordinated with Endot, we've coordinated with NIPSCO, and so that slight redesign will avoid major utility impacts.
I think the cost of relocating that gas line was between five hundred and nine hundred thousand.
So we don't worry about that.
So this is a lot simpler fix.
That ordinance doesn't have to be advertised until thirty, within thirty days after its passage, you can still do persons like every one of you want.
Anytime we change a speed limit or a stop sign, we like for people to come in so they can voice their concerns or, I mean, that's up to you guys.
Well, we, to do the first two readings now.
Yeah, yeah, we, you can do that and have them come in, yeah. Right.
Yeah, thank you.
But that's my opinion, I mean.
Well, we could, we'll get it out.
Yeah, they know about it.
Do you want to advertise that, Christina, or would you prefer I do?
I don't advertise them ever until after their pass. They have to be advertised within thirty days of their passage.
So advertise of course, John.
Okay. Okay, so we have ordinance zero-six-zero-five-two-zero-two-four. It's an ordinance establishing a speed limit on Carter County Road eight hundred west near Grass Creek in Wayne Township. Whereas Fulton County Highway Department and Fulton County Sheriff have completed a traffic study of County Road eight hundred west as described in subsection one, is therefore ordained that the speed limit set forth in subsection one supersedes all prior speed limits at this location. It is further ordained by Fulton County Highway Department, post-appropriate speed limit signs to advertise motorists at the speed limit at this location. Subsection one, speed zone for County Road eight hundred west. Forty-five miles per hour speed zone on County Road eight hundred west, starting at State Route seventeen and continuing south for five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, ending speed zone at County Road eight hundred eight fifty south. I entertain a motion to, second reading by Tyler.
So moved.
Second. All favor. Motion carries. We have ordinance zero-six-zero-five-two-zero-two-four. It's a speed zone ordinance for County Road eight hundred west.
Okay. Next thing I want to talk to you about is I've got a contract quote from Pavement Solutions. They've done our crack ceiling in the past, and what I'm looking at doing is crack ceiling old thirty-one from the city limits up to the bridge. And then we'd like to chip seal that this year and then re-stripe it. We'll probably re-stripe the whole, old thirty-one, too, while we're at it. But I'd like to crack seal south of the bridge. That's the section that's not on the federal aid grant. Preserve that as long as we can. North of the bridge, we believe we'll hold until we repave. Then I've also got estimates on here for Zebra and Park and Thirteenth Streets here in town. We paved them several years ago, and they're, it's time for them to have some maintenance on them, crack seal them up, and then chip them later this year. We use ninety gas, which Rick's familiar with that, it'll block it in quicker. It won't be the dusty chip seal that you see sometimes. And then also, while we're in there, I'd like to do Fortuna and Frontier. If you're good with all that.
Right, so this is all we nearby? I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Next thing I wanted to talk to you about, I've got an employee, Joe Morrow, he was injured about a week ago, off, off of the county time, on his own personal time, over the weekend. He's out of FM LA, he's requesting leave of absence. I'm going to ask for, to go ahead and just approve six weeks in case he needs it. It looks like he's healing up pretty good, he can probably come back in about a week's time. But just in case, so I don't have to keep coming back and asking him, just ask for the maximum amount of six weeks.
Okay.
Leave of absence without paying.
Okay. Got any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve?
Second. All favor. Motion carries three.
And then the last thing I want to talk to you today about, which all three of you are aware, Leslie's going to be leaving, so I'll be without a clerk. She gave me an end date of July eleventh. So I would like to go ahead and advertise for that job and get started. I figure if we advertise for a couple of weeks, pick somebody, give them a couple of weeks for, to give their, their boss notice, that would give the boss about, that'd put us about the first of June, a little after, and now give us about thirty days or so, four to six weeks of training, which is greatly needed.
Yeah, just give it to us so you know all the rules and how to play that.
Are you guys, I guess, are you okay with us?
Yeah, you have to, I see it for seven days first, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd happy advertise here seven and then another seven in the general public, at least if we don't hire within.
We're, I'm okay with everything.
I don't know if we'll have to ask council approval on that.
Ask Christine, she'll know how to go about it, just whatever she says.
Okay. But that's all I have for today, other than the bids.
Yeah, fine.
Which Brooks was a low bid, and they met all the quantities and they met all all these.
So you're going for lump sum, they get everything then, right?
Yes, and that's the way we bid it.
Yeah, I thought that was, you say, Brooks, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay. I entertain a motion that we approve the Brooks contract for the one million three hundred and ninety-four thousand, three, four hundred and thirty dollars and ninety cents for the community crossings.
So moved.
Second. All favor. Motion carries three. Okay, you guys had a chance to look over the minutes?
Yeah. I didn't see nothing wrong with them.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all favor. Motion carries three. You guys had a chance to look over all the financials, transfers, claims, corporations, any questions concerns?
We had one question, I think that got answered, right?
Yep. Insurance claim docket, dispersals of four eleven, twenty-four to four seventeen, sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and eight cents. We have payroll claim, docket for four nineteen, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. The payroll deduction, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and eighty-six cents. Claim docket, tax up interest and redemption owed to buyer of four hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Solid waste, district cost fees of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. We have utilities, twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. May mislay, May six mislays, claims of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. Credit card claim, eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. We have payroll for five-three, two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, with a deduction of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents. Transfers from the treasure, two hundred and fifty dollars from legal fees to mileage. There's a treasure, two hundred and fifty dollars from legal fees to continuing education. There's a treasure, seventy-five dollars from dues to shredding. We have communications, a thousand dollars for mileage to training. We have an appropriation request for communications for the equipment, it's for the portable radios for Fulton County Sheriff's Department, needed for the volunteers to be assigned to responders. Radios are county assets, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Those IDs were turned in.
Okay. Do we, the old business, Rick?
Nope.
Dave?
Nope.
Polly?
Nope.
Christine?
No.
Public?
I have one old business, I do apologize, the warning sirens, we are in tornade season, weather disruptive, and I just want to remind everybody that it's usually the township trustees or private property owners or like the parks that maintain those, the county does not. So we do have one that's not working up at Meiser's Trailer Park in that area, which is called Another Trailer Park. Christine, can you?
I don't remember.
It's changed dates because of the owners, but they disengage that with an electric pump and stuff that it was attached to. So when that happens, they need to contact that property owner or the township trustee. So if you do get complaints about that, we just do not maintain them, but we help get them grants to put them up.
Okay.
I could think about one more thing. Anything more to add?
Yes, Lauren and I are working on that to get the dates. So probably it'll be in June, is it missed, right?
Okay.
So that we can get that done and sell them.
Sounds good. Okay. New business, Rick?
Nope.
Dave?
Nope.
Polly?
Nope.
Christine?
No.
New business? Okay, new public comment. Okay. We're going to, the commission's going to recess for just a short period of time. We have an executive meeting, and we're going to reconvene after that if there's any action we need to take. Entertained a motion to recess for our executive meeting.
So moved.
Second. All favor. Motion carries three. Okay, thank you, everybody. Five-six, commission meeting back into order. We had an executive session and we had a, an affidavit here that we need to sign for pending litigation, so I entertain a motion that we sign this affidavit for the attorneys. So moved.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries. If I get it, Polly, you need this?
Yeah, we just need to get it over to Lauren.
Okay.
You want to skip on over there?
Yeah, I can skip on over there.
I want to see it.
Zoom, do ZJ, get a copy of that, too, probably. H R?
H R, could I copy that, too, or not?
How's that work, do you know? No?
I'll skip to Lauren.
Okay.
Because it'll all be involved in that lawsuit.
Okay, then. I entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. All favor. That motion carries three. Thanks, everybody.